We'll call the meeting to order.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call the roll please.
Madam?
Dear Gary.
Dear Mcmullin.
Dear Reed.
Dear Debra.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't have any.
I do have the next items of proclamation for epilepsy awareness month. So that was deemed for November. And I won't bore everyone here by reading through the entire proclamation, but Streeter Unlimited has excellent services for those who are struggling with epilepsy. So please reach out to them if you need or would like for more information on their programs. Okay, public comment. This is going to be a little different than normal. And I've got some competing items here. So our city code spells out specifically, it's chapter seventeen sixteen oh nine oh with special permits. Item C says, "A city council may issue special permits providing the plan commission concludes based upon the information submitted at that hearing." So their special permit and hearing is when comments are supposed to, or should be taken and what we, the council needs to use to make our determining factor for the solar farm items tonight. With that being said, we also have the first amendment that is part of being an American. So we're kind of at that competing where they, this says we need to follow the public hearing and that's what we're supposed to vote on. But I prefer not to restrict free speech when we don't have to as well. So it's a, it's a little bit of, I think I've, I've struggled with it all weekend. What's the, how do you handle this? Because it's not an easy thing. So with that, we do open for public comment. You have three minutes. We are supposed to vote based on public hearing and the items addressed at the public hearing from the plan commission. You are allowed to talk about solar and, and items as such. However, our vote's not supposed to take that into account based on our ordinance. So that's kind of where we are. I know it's not, it's not the most fun thing or the, my favorite thing to say, but to, to follow the letter of our ordinance and such, we still want to give people a moment to, to talk and have your comment, but our vote's supposed to stay on the hearing. So that's where we are. I will open up to public comment, please, if you have something. You have three minutes, please come up and state your name. It said you're allowed to, to address us as council.
Did you read this?
Yes. You are allowed to address us as council. I don't want to restrict any of that. We're just not supposed to take into anything into the car on our vote tonight. It's not the best. So anyone in the public comment, please come to the podium. On anything, yeah.
I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left.
Please state your name for me.
Susan Poland.
Susan.
Poland, P.O., Illinois. I live out on Fifteenth Road and was at last week's meeting. The letters that I wrote, my neighbors wrote, were passed out to the four plan commission members who were present. They didn't get read because I couldn't read my email links via printed document and get through ten pages as the meeting was in session. That didn't make me feel as if our voices were even heard or taken into consideration. Now, the eleven considerations that the plan commission voted on last week failed to mention some things about noise and how it is a detriment to our comfort.
Ma'am, excuse me, ma'am. This is the type of evidence that should have been presented at the public hearing and ample opportunity and notice to be heard was given to everybody. So I would ask these remarks that are intended to be evidentiary in nature be ruled out of order.
Also, at last week's meeting, that is not in my three-minute speech, their lawyer was making very leading questions to the representative that started as, "Isn't it true that? Isn't it true then?" And all she said was yes. So no one was commenting on that. I mean, I have three minutes, it's not. And what I was about to say about the noise, it's on page fifty-six of the city council meeting packet. It says, "One thing to note here is that the noise increase at night is much higher, five to seven decibels for Streeter, which is perceptible and might require noise mitigation. The results shown here are for daytime only. Given no notice study was required, we can just mention the daytime results, which is what we've typically done for past projects." I don't know if that was supposed to be included in the, the slides, but it is on your city commission packet. So why wasn't a noise study required when these are placed, placed feet from our homes? It seems like important information was purposely avoided. So what else aren't they saying and what else aren't we requiring? And then about the, about the landscaping, if I can't speak to any of the considerations, I guess I might be done. Anyway, the pollinator-friendly plants, they, they said they were used to control erosion, which they are admitting happens. So in thirty-five years, this land will not be as if nothing has ever.
Ma'am, ma'am, I can't, I can't resist. This is commenting specifically at.
I thought she said it was pushing something I could see as I was. I know, this is a bad struggle. So I'm, if you. I'm done. Are you finished? Okay, thank you. No, I'm not finished. I have three minutes. I timed myself all day long so that I would have three minutes out here without you being interrupted.
Well, your, your comments are, should have been.
Important.
They are important. And that's, and that's what the public hearing that was conducted by the plan commission was for.
Right. So I, I think we can, this is the struggle. So our, we do have.
We can't allow new evidence that wasn't presented at the plan commission to come in via public comment. Ms. Pauling was at the public hearing. She was given notice of that public hearing. She was given an opportunity to be heard. I see Mr. Wilkinson is stepping up. He was at both public hearings. He was given ample opportunity to present evidence.
But we weren't given time to go up to the council.
That was the function, that is the function of the public hearing. So to get a clear record on what the evidence was and what is being considered. So if Mr. Wilkinson or others want to make general comments on their feelings about solar energy, that's perfectly permissible. But if they're going to comment specifically on what the evidence was at the hearing or try to present new evidence to the city council, that time has passed. And it's a matter of fundamental fairness to the petitioner as well. And it's also fairness to city council. Because the reason we have a plan commission is to conduct those public hearings and not to have public comment during a city council meeting turn into another public hearing. The time for the evidence has been closed.
Can I make a comment? One of the, I think, unless I'm mistaken, one of the reasons for this is zoning, to the extent that the council votes it down. Zoning is often litigating.
Right.
It goes to court. And we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we, we take evidence tonight that wasn't properly handled at the public hearing and make, make a decision, then have this decision be overruled on a technicality. So it's in everyone's interest that we follow our attorney's advice because at the end of the day, whatever decision that this council makes, we want to be able to support it and have a likelihood of success if it, if it becomes litigued. Courts of cases often go to court.
I agree, thank you.
So we, we do have, so we have a public ordinance forum rule. And this allows comment, public comment limited to thirty minutes.
Three minutes per person.
Three minutes per person. We can ask if there is a group, a group of three or more individuals on the same topic and designate a single spokesperson to present the group's public comments.
Who they can comment, they just can't give any evidence. Is that your comments?
In their opinions.
In their opinions. The time for, for all that has passed.
And I will be conscious of that. Counsel, thank you for allowing me to speak. I understand that you have a job to do. And what I mainly want to discuss is just, you know, the planning commission has voted this down twice, okay? And the second time, there was only four planning commission members that were able to attend, but the other ones that did not attend had already voted it down the first time. The, the eleven points that they were to study this by and to approve or disapprove this by, you can argue every one of them, but point number six is one you can't argue.
Okay. I'm going to interrupt again because now you're specifically addressing a point.
Okay, I, I, I'm sorry, I take that back. I, I guess I'm just wanting to state that the planning commission has studied this and heard all the evidence. You guys unfortunately did not hear the evidence. And that's, that's part of our flawed systems of government. And it's not your fault, but it's unfortunate that you guys weren't privy to hearing all that. But you did not get it.
You got a lot of.
You, you got the evidence, you've got it, so, but you're, you're not.
I read every page.
You weren't able to see the passion that people talk about, understanding that part. There's big differences when you're able to see it versus reading it. And so.
That's fair.
I will just talk then about, it's not evidentiary. It's just about being a residence of somewhere that, that I plan to be, my future home, my family, and, and bringing them into an area that I developed that I wanted to bring other people in to enjoy. I wanted you to feel that and understand that they didn't come in with that and might have a solar farm fifty feet behind them because we knew it was residentially zoned. That's not evidentiary, that's just facts, okay?
But you're, you're again, you're talking about your, you're, you're saying exactly what you said at the public hearing.
I'm just trying to state the way I feel as a person, okay? I'm not trying, I'm not trying to state anything that's, of anything that's going to, you know.
Your opinion, ma'am?
I know, I know.
As, as just, as just a person looking to buy a home, you know, or come into a community, all I'm saying is, somebody that, that lives in this area, you know, I would like you all to remember that, that's all I'm saying, okay? And thank you very much for your time.
I, this is, this is one where I, I understand completely Cheryl and, and Dave. I'm just. To me, it's, I want to let people talk. And I, and I understand your things, but I just, it's not, it makes my gut sick to say you can't talk about this.
But ma'am mayor and council members, everybody's had an opportunity to talk about this. There'd been two public hearings on it. There was notice on those public hearings. There were, at the public hearing, there's no time restrictions on how long they were allowed to speak. So they have had an opportunity to be heard, and that's the right that they should be afforded to.
Do we, are we allowed to ask questions beyond?
When you get to the point of the city council meeting where you're deliberating, you can deliberate among yourselves, but no, you're not permitted to ask questions of the developer or the objectors at that point. You base it on the record that's in front of you.
I've already read it, I think I came in with my decision, so. People can say what they want, it's not going to affect your careful.
I, I understand. We should continue along with public comment.
Any other public comment?
Mr. Upoff, you're going to have to say more.
No, I understand. Seth Upoff, on behalf of Total Energies, my address is five nine zero one North Prospect Road, Peoria, Illinois. And I understand the admissions, I understand the requirements here, so I'm going to keep this general. When we're talking about solar development generally, these are the things that I'd like you to keep in mind. First of all, you pass an ordinance that allows for solar in your community. So by doing so, you've already made certain determinations about whether this should be even allowed at all. So the very fact that you have an ordinance, I think you should keep in mind that you've already done some of the work.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Upoff, you're, you're, in a backdoor way, you're arguing the merits of your petition.
Okay. I don't, I don't agree, but that's fine. What I was going to say is, you're supposed to make your decision based on evidence and not passion. Things can be very passionate among people, but you're here to make a decision dispassionately based on the evidence that was presented. Solar developments are economic drivers. So any size solar development that's a, a commercial development has an opportunity to be an economic driver for this community. It's an opportunity to provide jobs during construction. It's a general statement.
This is true. I know what's going on there.
This is true of any solar project.
From the factory created for Streeter. You said there was one job that was going to be created after.
Because this isn't an open.
We're in a little, out of order.
And in a backdoor way, you're arguing, these are the same arguments you made before the planning commission. You're commenting on evidence that your solar development is an economic driver.
No, I didn't say, I said solar development generally. I said any size, and you put.
I, I would recommend it out of order, just like the, the other folks.
Then I would, I think these are arguments not specific to these projects. So what I was going to say was, again, I think you have to make, when you're thinking about solar, you have to think about these general topics, all right? So those are the ones that I was commenting on. I think that solar is an opportunity for communities, shows they are moving forward, that they are looking to the future in trying to provide for their community and for their.
Look, it's not an argument, Rick. Keep public comment, you're supposed to sit there and just listen, please.
Well, I said what I would say is, there was discussion by Madam Mayor about constitutional rights, the first amendment, but one of the foundational core considerations for our country is landowner rights, personal property rights. And so I think that when you're considering zoning, you have to weigh very heavily the personal property rights of a landowner, any landowner. But if a landowner has a project that would benefit him and his family, and it's not going to actively harm any of the neighbors around him, then I think you should weigh that very heavily. And I think you should take that into consideration. And I don't think those landowner rights should be overcome by what I refer to as a viewpoint veto, somebody that doesn't like to look at something. So I hope you'll see landowner rights in mind when making your decision. Thank you.
Are you available to test one on the solar farms? Comments?
Take general comments and we'll.
So no more comments on.
Well, it's Brittany Skinner, twenty-one memory lane, sixty feet from a potential solar farm. I agree with property owner rights to an extent, but when it harms other property owners, then that's an issue. You can't just rezone things because you want to make money. I can't buy the ground next to me and start a garbage dump or chicken farm, but this is okay. Honestly, who wants to spend three hundred fifty thousand dollars?
I'd stop all testing phones. Comments on.
Comments on project, just sharing aloud.
Any public comment on anything not related to solar farms? We will go to action items. Motion one, item one. Motion to receive and place on file plan commission's recommendations. We have a motion and second to place, this is just to receive and place on file.
Hurry, second, Mr. Reed.
Yeah.
And this is to read the following two recommendations. So this is plan commission recommendation twenty twenty-four eleven recommending, recommending denial of a special use permit to petitioner C.S. Spring Lake LLC petitioning for a special use permit under the provisions of section seventeen sixteen oh nine oh of the city's zoning title or a proposed neighborhood utility solar electric facility on five twenty Gulf Road, Streeter, Illinois.
Yeah, I would just, those are the titles.
Yes.
But just for point of information for city council, item number one was a deadlock vote. So although that was the motion that was made and it's the title of the recommendation, it was a deadlock vote, so it didn't result in a positive.
In a, in a, in a recommendation correctly or the other. So that's just the point of information for council.
B, plan commission recommendation twenty twenty-four twelve recommending approval and issuance of a special use permit to petitioner C.S. Streeter LLC petitioning for a special use permit under the provisions of chapter seventeen sixteen oh nine oh to allow for the use of a proposed neighborhood utility solar electric facility located on West Illinois Route eighteen in the city of Streeter, Los Alamos, Livingston Counties. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
Nope.
Clerk call the roll.
Tanner?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Mcmullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Debra?
Aye. Item two. Ordinance twenty twenty-four thirty-two approving and awarding a special use permit to petitioner C.S. Spring Lake LLC under the provisions of section seventeen sixteen oh nine oh of the city's zoning title to allow for the construction of a neighborhood utility solar electric facility located on five twenty Gulf Road, Streeter, Illinois. Okay, get a motion and second.
Second.
Okay, Matt with the motion and Dave Reed with the second. And now we can go into discussion on this item. Counsel, have any questions on the evidence presented or any discussion?
My question is, for the ordinance number getting here from number two, that's going against the recommendation then from the plan commission, correct?
So in the. It was, it was.
That's not true.
Doesn't pass, right? Like it's.
Not approved.
Right. So this is. Right. And I will allow and they will deny on this vote.
I would just go with, just as, as I always do with the plan commission. So we had the public hearing and there was four, four members, so it was actually, it was a three-way, a, a three-person vote, and then the commissioner or the chair actually voted as well, so.
On the.
It was actually a, a two, a two vote, uh, uh, two.
Deny.
Deny, one, to recommend of the members, the chair was the fourth vote to make the tie. So just so you, that, that's the way that vote went down.
On the first vote, because we requested, we voted once.
No, no, this was last week's meeting. So the, the previous meeting, you know, back in September, there were more members there and, and they, you got a negative recommendation at that point. This last meeting, where they went through all the evidence, you have it all in front of you, making sure it was in the package. So anyway, on the, on the five twenty Gulf Road side, that was the way the vote went. There were two members opposed, one member for, and then the chairman voted for. So that was the four votes, just for clarification, everybody. And to the comment there, as the ordinance, the, all the ordinances that were put together are always put in a positive fashion. So Cheryl lets you know, but a, a no vote will be not too overt, so on that ordinance. But any other questions from the hearing? That's what Cheryl told me I was supposed to respond to. If you have any questions from the hearing, I can do my best to recamp.
Now, if nobody else has any comments, you know I always do. I'd like to vote no on this. I don't want, you know, a big percentage of my fellow Streeterites angry at me for voting yes. I have not found a legitimate reason to vote no on this. It does not create noise, doesn't create traffic. Once it's built, I guess there's going to be some traffic initially for the building, but I, I think solar farms are good neighbors. They don't cause trouble. So I've been looking for a reason. I, I went through everything. I, I read all the comments on the first hearing. I read all the comments on the second hearing. I think I held this up. It's, it's a lot to go through, and I went through all of it. I do my homework, if nothing else. Yesterday, I called the mayor of Champaign because they have a solar farm that is contiguous to their city. I called the mayor of St. Brook. Again, they have a solar farm that is in a residential area. I talked to the planning commissioner of Champaign. All three of those individuals could not understand why anybody would not want a solar farm in their neighborhood. So I, I explained to them right now, if, there's nothing there. It is agriculture, it is a agricultural field, and she said, in her opinion, this was even better than that because tractors make noise. Tractors create dust. Harvesting creates a big mess. Fertilizers, bean spray. With a solar farm, you don't have any of those problems. I got a letter here. It's on Streeter Tourism letterhead. I called the head of Streeter Tourism and asked him, you know, does this mean you're against it? He knew nothing about this. He was not happy that somebody used his letterhead. So I just completely disregarded that letter. I got a petition, has over three hundred names on it. The more I looked at that petition, the more ridiculous it was. It has names from Florida, has names from Texas, Oklahoma, Connecticut, and New York. None of those people are going to be affected by our vote here tonight. So I don't know why a petition would be turned in with those names on it. There was even an individual that signed their name, "School sucks." I would be embarrassed to have said I turned that petition into my city council. If you want us to take your concerns seriously, you need to take serious what you give to us. Like I said, I want to vote no. I, I want happy neighbors, I want happy Streeterites. I don't want to be the hated guy down the street. But I do not see this having any kind of a detrimental effect on any of the neighbors. And I feel very strongly about personal property rights. That's one of the unique things about America is we have rights and other people, if you're not hurting them, they have no, no right to tell you what you can do with your property. So that's where I'm coming down on it. So I, I'm probably going to be in the minority. I've been in the minority before and I've lived through it, so that's where I stand.
Item, so item six. The proposed use will be consistent with the character of the city. All four members of plan commission present at the public hearing voted no. And as such, that's the evidence I will be using to make my decision.
And I looked at that, I looked at that, and one of the complaints, I had two people stop me at church on Sunday and say, how ridiculous it is they want to put this in a residential neighborhood. Residential should just be residential only, industrial should be somewhere else. There's not one person in this room, I don't think, is sad to see Owens go. Owens was built in nineteen thirty-four on Chabanas Street. It ran twenty-four seven, largest glass factory in the world, and is right smack dab in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And everybody hates to see it go. Out of the two, I'd rather have a solar farm than a glass factory. But everybody's upset about the glass factory leaving. They think it's ridiculous, we're going to bring a solar farm into a residential neighborhood. You could hear, back when that thing was running Bull Forest, three thousand two hundred people worked in there, that's a lot of traffic. It's a lot of noise every night, a lot of lights all around it. You could hear those bottles clinking two blocks away. Nobody complained. They didn't complain because it was everybody in this town's bread and butter. They didn't complain because it was everybody in this town's bread and butter. So I, this, this, it doesn't fit the neighborhood, I don't buy that argument either. Owens didn't fit it, Thatcher's didn't fit it.
No, but I think we'd be hard pressed to find anybody that owned their house before the Owens was there, that's still around.
No, they moved, they moved in next to a glass factory. Flinks is in the middle of a neighborhood. Talawell was in the middle of a residential neighborhood, so. I rest my, I, and I know I'm in the minority here, but I just want people to understand why I'm probably gonna vote the way I'm gonna vote.
Any further discussion? Okay, clerk call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be that.
Aye.
Item...
Three.
Item three, my number is in the folder in the paper, sorry about that. Um, item three, ordinance twenty twenty four thirty-three approving and awarding the issuance of a special use permit to petitioner C S Streeter LLC under the provisions of seven, section seventeen sixteen oh nine oh of the city zoning title to allow for the construction of a neighborhood solar electric utility facility located on West Illinois Route eighteen. We get a motion and second.
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 Okay, Matt with McMullen and Dave Reed with the second. Discussion on this item.
Uh, just like the last one, so this, this public hearing was actually held back in September, uh, but then it was held over waiting on the results of the second public hearing. So, uh, the one now on Route eighteen behind Eagle Point Logistics, Jason's eighteen there, uh, was a unanimous recommendation of the council. I, I think it might, it was not unanimous, but did receive a positive recommendation from the council or from the commission. If there are any questions, I'll sit down.
Of course, sir.
Thank you.
Any discussion or comments on... Okay. Clerk call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be that.
I'm a nay on this one, nay. Okay, item four. Resolution twenty twenty four fifty-five authorizing and approving the levy of an additional tax of point zero two percent on real property within the city of Streeter pursuant to seventy-five ILCS five slash three dash one for the fiscal year beginning oh one oh one twenty twenty-five and ending twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-five. Get a motion and second.
Second.
Okay, Tim with the motion and Dave, Connor with the second.
Well, this, uh, what I'd be requesting is, uh, is made every year by the library board. It's nothing different this year over the past years. And, uh, the library after the last meeting did, uh, recommend a reduction from their original proposal. So when we get a budget discussion ready, I would talk about that. But this is, uh, a routine issue that the library board...
This is not a new tax, we, we've been levying this for ten or twelve years. It's only to be used for maintenance of the building.
We do this every year, I know every year I get hammered that we're raising taxes.
Right.
And it's the, it's, the way it's worded in the state law says the corporate authorities may levy an additional tax of point zero two percent of the taxable property in the city, and that's why it's called the additional tax. So it's not a new, it's, it's not, it's done every year.
It's just part of what...
This is part of it.
It's just part, but it's, it's always a standalone.
Yeah.
It's, it's typically on the taxable as a, it's a line item, that's point zero two.
Yeah, it's, it's a part of the entire tax levy request that we put in, but it is broken out into just separate line item.
And also the state law requires us to do this procedural step every year.
Any other comment or discussion on item four? Clerk call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be that.
Aye. Item, excuse me, item five, motion to approve the meeting and holiday schedule for the calendar year twenty twenty-five. You get a motion and second.
Second.
Yep, motion by Tim, second by Matt. Any discussion? Again, this, this won't work, we have to do every year. So we typically will set it up in November. Uh, clerk call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe the first month, January, we're gonna meet on a Thursday.
Right.
Yeah, this is the first. Item six. Motion to receive and place on file recommendations from the Streeter Parks and Open Spation Board. There are two recommendations. Um, one is to fund construction of four community pickleball courts and then B is funding for purchase of nets and goals for more space for soccer fields. Again, this is to receive and place on file. Get a motion?
Thank you.
Okay, Dave Reed with the motion and Tim Gary with the second. Any discussion?
Will they be coming back to us with a more specific...
For...
Reaction?
I believe so. For A, um, I, I did request that we change this to receive and place on file. The original agenda had to approve, but I did not think we would want to approve it unless we had a good cost on, on this, so I did just take it to...
We're not voting to approve these tonight.
We're, we're voting just to retake, we're accepting their recommendation.
Do you know where the opportunity would be?
They asked, um...
Well, the soccer fields, I think, they're just looking for equipment to use the fields that are existing. So when the school's out, they usually take the nets and things down, so we would have some, am I right, Tim? So they would be available over the summer, uh, for people to use those fields.
Which fields?
This was, I believe we talked about Oakland Park at the...
We're at, um, not Oakland Park, James Street, where the soccer fields are.
But then it goes to the high school now, since they're in charge of that?
Yes, they belong to the high school, but they take their nets and things down. So they're just big empty grass. I think the parks is looking to put nets out there so people can play soccer in the, the months of the...
Right, but the high school is now in charge of James Street, aren't they?
No, except for the dog park, but they have, um, they have agreements for some of those fields.
Well, anything we do on the soccer fields will need to be coordinated with the schools.
And that, at the parks were, it was specifically, this, I believe the south end of Oakland Park is just, this was just an extra space for some nets, um...
Oh, it's at Oakland and not James Street?
At Oakland, and there was, um, there was some baseball chatter, I think that the library maybe had seeded the field or done some treatment and someone went to play with their kids and it just was kind of a... So they, so it was, can we find a spot?
And that gave up its spaces and allowed we could put soccer nets.
Right, just, just something for people just to go in and play, it's just recreation. So any further discussion? Right, I will request, um, the clerk call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be that.
Aye. Our next item is... Let me go into here, um, our consent agenda. I get a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with a fund warrant total of five hundred eight thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
Okay, is it Tim and Matt? Any discussion? Matt, clerk call the roll, please.
No, Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor be that.
Aye. Okay, we'll go into item seven, um, which is budget discussion. So our second, our second budget meeting out of typically four that we'll have as a council, one of the items tonight, we need to decide on our tax levy request, um, so that we can put our note, our legal notices and have a public hearing scheduled. The public hearing would be December fourth with plans to vote on an approved budget at the December eighteenth meeting.
Would the budget hearing only be required if we go over five percent?
No, we have to do a public hearing every year and if we go over five percent, it goes into a, we have to add an additional truth and taxation hearing. No?
So, for your tax levy, you only, you have to announce it twenty days before you adopt it? If you're going to go over five percent, then you have a truth and taxation hearing. If you're not going to go over five percent, you do not have any public...
That's, I think that's why it's there, unless I mixed it, but...
But there's a hearing on the budget.
There's a public hearing, we do a hearing on the budget, but we do, if there's a, if we're over that five, we have to do the truth and taxation in addition to.
Right.
I heard it kind of run together, so I apologize if I was...
I'm like, I, why question, did I say that correctly, 'cause I...
I, I, I gotta look.
Okay, so there was a new two-page, uh, item that was not here last week with scenarios one and two, two different levy amounts.
What's changed is the library has reduced its recommendation.
Yeah, we lowered our request.
And so with the lower request, it cuts in half, um, the losses that we can sustain in the general fund. So scenario one is a four point nine ninety percent increases in property taxes. That would fund a hundred percent of the increases for police and fire pensions. Would fully fund our pension obligations. In addition, it would, uh, uh, nearly fund, well, it would fund on the library, but it would, he would be short about twenty-four thousand six hundred and seven, a fifty-seven dollars, so we'll need to ship money with the general fund to cover that gap. The other option that's presented tonight is if you wanted to fully fund the, the pension in the library and have a zero dollar impact of the general fund, that would require a five point five five percent increase in taxes and, uh, that would require a truth and taxation hearing, public notice. My recommendation would be to go with the four nine nine.
Now, if we make cuts to the budget, that could change that decrease, that correct?
Depending on what part of the budget.
We can always go down from what we decide tonight, but we can also go up. So once we publish it, we can, we can, we can go...
I was asking if we, if we were to cut some items out of the budget that would reduce what we're gonna spend next year, that would reduce what we're gonna have decreased in general fund.
Yes, um, the, the, the profit tax levy sets in place the profit taxes that would be issued by, the bills that would be issued by the county or the upcoming year. The budget is, uh, twofold, it's a financial plan for us for the next year and it's also appropriation authority and then the statute we operate on this budget officer. And so it gives the council authority to spend money and staff to spend money, but the council is not obligated to fund a, uh, a nine events in the budget. It just gives you the authority throughout the year to spend without having to come back and be doing a budget amendment. So just a grant of authority to yourselves is another way to stay money. Doesn't obligate you to do that.
So scenario one, we, and just, this is more for the public knowledge on us. Um, we, every year get an actuarial report that says what we need to fund for pension payments for fire employees. And this, we are basically obligated to fund that before the rest of the operations. Again, no comment, right, wrong, or indifferent, that's what that is. And so this year, we are seeing an increase of almost a hundred nine thousand for one, ninety-six thousand for the other. So if we increase our levy, which is the amount we are requesting by four point nine nine percent, that fully funds those two increases, um, what the library's requested and also means we would have to cut our general fund revenue, this is what the city uses to operate, by twenty-four thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars and some change.
Our general fund expense.
Our general fund expense. So that is, um, oftentimes we get bash, that we continue to raise taxes and raise taxes, um, we should make cuts, so this is just to fund certain increases and we have to make cuts elsewhere. So that's just my, that's how I understand it, um, that's with the four point nine nine. And if we went with a five point five five, that means zero cut or increase to the general tax fund while still funding the other two at a hundred percent. So...
And even going at the, if I'm reading this right, Dave, correct me if I'm not. If we go to the five point five five, our tax rate will be point two four five three, which is a drop, no, it'll be three percent, which is a drop from the three point two four it was last year.
Right, uh, you gotta be careful, uh, because the growth in assessed value may not always be due to new construction. It could just be re, you know, increases in the assessed values of existing homes and so if you...
I think is what happens.
So if you blow up, if you're always levying against that higher value, that just forces the homeowner to pay more. Uh, so it's, it's kind of a tricky thing, you wanna take advantage of the official assessed value, but you don't wanna punish the homeowner or any property owner any more than you need to in order to support that.
I know, I've, I know people have been getting the assessed increases. I know, I just received one from the assessment, my home was getting a sixteen percent assessed value increase, so. And that's what's kind of generated that increase in assessed value.
The tax rate, I would, because we get bashed a lot for having the highest tax rate in LaSalle County. And even going with the five point five five percent increase, it will lower our rate, our, our taxable rate, so.
I, I always tell people, if you're trying to get, if you have a million dollars and you're trying to get a hundred thousand, you're at ten percent. If I had, if that thing was worth two million and you want that hundred grand, you're only at five percent. It looks better, but you're getting the same amount of money.
Yep.
It's the same. The joys of...
It's just rate with the, you know, percentages, but...
Yeah, but that's what we get hit on all the time.
A lot of our costs are, are the same as communities where that same house might be worth thirty percent, forty percent more. So the rate's higher, but the amount being paid for the house and delivered services that they spend, I mean, that cost is gonna be whatever it is.
And, and it said that the system we are in, you know, the equalized assessed valuation is subjective.
Well, it depends on who you talk to.
Yeah.
If you talk to the appraiser, probably not.
Mayor, you feel your house is sixteen percent better than it was a year ago? Somebody out of LaSalle County Aetna Road thinks it's worth sixteen percent more. Yeah. You gotta live with it.
But you have seen property, I've seen homes for sale that seem to be higher than they had been in the past too, which is a good thing. I mean, it's, you're, you've invested in your home for so many years and the value's more, that's, that's better than a dropping when you wanna retire and...
Yeah, property, unfortunately, property...
It's one of those fluctuations.
Yeah, unfortunately... Yeah, unfortunately, property taxes are probably the only tax that I know of that is taxed against an unrealized gain.
Yep.
So, with all that, does council want to go for the four point nine nine or five point five five for our public hearing? Like I said, we can always come down, um, when we officially vote, but we need to publish.
I, yeah, I would, I would take the recommendation of the city manager. He understands all this better than we do.
Okay, so let's go with four point nine nine and we can stay as is or decide to decrease as we go through this next couple meetings.
Could we just, pardon you, Dave, I, I apologize. Could we just have a minute to reflect what that amount is?
Yes.
So, we have a minute that this is the amount that was announced at the beginning of tonight?
The, the levy request is four million six hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars.
So, that's the tax levy amount that's being announced tonight.
Other discussion on the budget. Is there anything? What else do we want to get into?
Well, I left my budget materials on my desk in my office. I'll need to run that if you ask a specific question. But at the last meeting, I kind of laid out by stripping some items out of the general fund that are, um, if you strip out the capital, uh, equipment and projects cost, you're, you're, you're essentially at, I think, with a five thousand dollars in balance. That's not my recommendation. I think we need to fund capital projects. We have a request from the park board now to build a pickleball court. And so, I gave you some options at the last meeting. We have built up a general fund balance over the past couple of years, in large part because, uh, we didn't need all of it to set the stand up our ambulance services. Um, so, we have some money available in the general fund that you can spend. Uh, and the others, uh, we've built up a, a bit of a balance in our home world and sales tax fund. Now, my caution to you is that you need to think about how you spend money relative to the, uh, the nature of the dollar that you're spending. If you're spending a, a fund balance, something that you've saved up for, you can only spend that dollar one time. So, that would be appropriate to be spent on capital, either capital equipment or capital project. Uh, if you desire to hire new public works employees, for example, we're going to need to then make a decision that going forward, we will divert what was capital, um, a capital contribution like the home world sales tax and bring that back into the operating fund. And we could do that. It's, it's, it's that balancing act between capital, which would mean we would have fewer street projects mainly. Maybe, uh, I think we're, we're, we transfer money out of the general to support sort of construction I think. And so, there may be an impact on sort of projects going forward. So, but that would, that effect would be felt over time. And, 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 cause there was a comment made at the last meeting about wanting to hire an additional police officer or public works employee or two. I, I would think that, uh, a public works employee, I mean, you could make the argument that a lot of what they do could be capital in nature, that it'd be kind of an easy, an easier sell to make, I think, using what was, uh, a cap, originally a capital item. And I remember the home world sales tax was based on a referendum that the voters approved, um, for capital projects and also for property tax relief. So, if you're going to spend fund balance on projects, I kind of laid out at the last meeting, really the maximum amount I would be comfortable in doing in a given year. Uh, but you can always spend less than that. Just like I said, a budget is just a, a plan. And as you go through the year, you can decide what you, you know, what projects you want to fund, whether it be a pickleball court or something else. Uh, we have a generator that, uh, that needs to be purchased for the city hall. And we have, uh, we have a need to replace, uh, the lights at the Bionic Field if they're going to continue to want to play night games and at that complex. There was a holistic capital lineup that, uh, included some equipment.
I'm looking at this one. Shoot, just see that? So, this is where we pull some of those capital items out and then are trying to use our sales tax balance and putting fund, funding back in. Does council have any comments on any of that? I think that you disagree with or want to go on?
Well, you can't add to, once we publish the budget, uh, for a public hearing, you can't really add to it, but you can always take things out.
No, but, right.
And I already had a conversation with Dave, what I was thinking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably be a good year to not spend. We don't know what we're going to lose with Owens, so. Maybe save a lot in twenty twenty-five and spend more in twenty twenty-six. So, we can have an idea of what we're going to see.
I'm, right. I know a couple of these, um, the, for example, the fire truck is a four-year wait period to order that.
Yeah.
So, it's one where you may want to order it because you don't, usually things don't get less expensive.
Right.
So, that's one where we, um-
Doesn't take away from the money.
No. So, we may want to take some of these and, and decide which ones we want to receive with funding next year.
Right. And in case the fire truck, the last truck we purchased, I believe we, uh, we borrowed the money for.
We took fines, I think we just made that one.
So, there are going to be some capital items that you, you, they're really appropriate to borrow for, not necessarily, they didn't spend, so-
But to lock in the purchase price.
Yeah, well, I didn't mean to get it because eventually the old truck will have to take it on service. I mean, if you just, if I'm reading this right, last year we approved on our revenues to be around twenty-nine and a half million and we're estimating twenty-five point seven. So, that's a four million dollar shortfall.
Well, there's grant money that gets hopefully confusing.
Right. Well, I'm just saying though, I mean, if, if, if we were paying on twenty-nine, I'd say twenty-five, that's reason that maybe we shouldn't be spending too much money.
Right, but-
And then our-
That could include grant for particular projects. You have to look at our general fund, which is around twelve hundred thirteen thousand.
We do. Yeah, we do a zero sum?
I don't think the general fund fluctuates like that.
I just, to me, I think a cautious approach could be probably wiser for next year.
All right, one thing I, I guess we, there's a little discussion last time about, um, like an economic development role or something on that one. If we wanted to earmark money for a couple of years to pull that and, and go forward with that to move the role as well. If there's a special art consideration on that one. No complaints from them.
Well, we're going to have to do something if the, uh, Department of Commerce releases the incubator grant monies and we build off that project, uh, that there'll be a need to have an employee overseeing the maker's lab. And as part of that, that's part of our economic development program. Timing is kind of difficult to assess right now.
I would like to see just earmark some, whether it's a contract or some money go toward that and, and kind of plan for that for a couple of years. Get you guys to disagree with that if you want, but that's one thing I'd like to see, especially with now that we're, um, with Owens, it's an important thing to continue.
And I know Jeff had mentioned sealing a couple of lots around town. I'd like to see us do more than just a couple.
Couple of what?
Lots.
Parking lots.
Parking lots.
Oh.
Lot of them are cracked and they need to be resealed and and he asked for money for two and I talked to Jeff and Jeremy too, I believe, was there, um, about doing six or eight, maybe ten of them. I think, uh, they need it and it's, it's good for long-term maintenance. And it, it, it makes a property look so much nicer too. It's like, you have a house, it's dilapidated and it's got grass that's eight inches high. You can't afford to rehab the whole house, but if you mow the lawn and paint the porch, you know, it looks a lot better. Sealing those lots would do that and restripe, you know. I, I think would improve the looks of a lot of our buildings around town. If the lots were nice and shiny black.
Hey, council, any comment on for tonight? We'll go with the four point nine nine for the public hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
On the budget?
On the budget.
On, on the budget side. You see, funding one project versus another, I, I mean, it's just numbers. I, um, is there a consensus that we're going to reallocate some home world sales tax monies to fund these cap projects? Along the lines of what I laid out. Now, you don't have to spend them, but if I budget, that allows you to spend it. And then you decide during the year how deep you want to get into that, those funds. But I have to have something in the budget.
Yeah. We all know how government budgets work. If it's budgeted, it generally gets spent.
Well, that's actually not the way we operate. Uh, you'll-
I'm glad to hear that, so.
No, because this council hasn't held, that, that's a great way of, to, to cause a cultural change. When you start stripping money out of, uh, an accountant, that money will always be spent every year. Um, our departments don't really do that. They spend it. And, and part of the trust is if we didn't quite budget enough money and they need that set of tires for that truck, well, we're, we're gonna get those-
I understand. We have a tight margin we work with, so we can't-
We try to stand behind the departments to, you know, if something unexpected comes up. But if they don't have the need to spend, they, I don't see them doing that. We're not in a rush. I don't think you season with final month of the budget, a rush to, in expenses.
Anything further on budgets?
I think you need to, you looking for a dollar amount?
No, I'm just looking for general guidance. I'll, I, I don't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take capital money from the home world sales tax. I'll put money in for economic development, that's a personnel account. So, we need to kind of, the capital side, I'll have money in the various capital accounts. Whether or not you spend money on, for a park project, shelter versus trickleball quarter, that's your call. Um, you know, that, that you can make later in the year. You don't want to submit as part of the budget for a particular project unless you want to. But, uh, these are all estimates anyways as to what things are going to cost.
Right.
We're not going to always know until we actually go up with it.
That sounds like a good plan.
So, I'll add the, the economic development position, whether it be contract or personnel, but I'll put it in as personnel, I think. And, uh, and then make sure we have some money available for a parking lot. And then I'll have some of the other capital items, make sure we have the, some money and then the guys later in the year can decide what, what we're gonna spend on. Is that the consensus?
Yeah.
Yes?
Go to city official comments.
I just have one thing. I think I've said enough tonight, but, um, the petitions to run for council, uh, we do this week and we had five, five returned. Uh, Dan Danko, Scott Shire, Tom Yazier Pierce, Justin Skinner, and Christopher Thomas. Uh, good luck to all of you. It's, I, I'm always impressed with anybody that has the backbone and nerve to put their name on a ballot and, and turn in a petition because it is a hard thing to do, I know from experience. Um, so, congratulations and good luck to those five. And I'm sorry to see that Matt and Moose both decided not to turn in one this time. That's it.
I believe I've said it before, but I would like to give a thank you to Dave Lawless for his swing, um, that he donated to the Strewer City Park playground. His, um, his son did an Eagle Scout project and built the framework and, um, through the years, the swing had, that was there had gotten damaged, so, um, he replaced this with a accessible, um, swing. So, we appreciate his donation for that. And I also, um, I guess want to give a big thank you to, there's a press release from Trident, but thank you to Trident, La Salle County State's Attorney's Office, Livingston County State's Attorney's Office, La Salle County Sheriff's Office, Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Bureau County Sheriff's Office, Marshall County Sheriff's Office, Putnam County Sheriff's Office, Idaho Police Department, Peru Police Department, La Salle Police Department, and I guess save the best for last, the Strewer Police Department. As many of you know, there was a um, six search warrants issued on Monday and that's out there on, I know Livingston County Sheriff had that on their social media and I shared that as well today, but, um, it's, there is quite a long list of law enforcement agencies working together and that's a good thing in my opinion. So, I appreciate all that work and thank them for, uh, the service. Then, I will request a motion and second to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussions of legal matters under five I L C S one twenty slash two, items two and one. Okay, Matt with the motion and Tim with the second. I need just, I guess clerk call the roll. Let me, Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor, be aye.
Aye.